Good evening, I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the relaxing days of summer and the time to enjoy family and friends. We are grateful for our administrators who officially kicked off the new year last week, and we thank you for their dedication and willingness to do the work necessary for our school district to move forward. And as our teachers and remaining staff members return to work next week, we ask a special blessing upon each of them, asking that you give them the enthusiasm and determination to be the difference in the life of the child this coming school year. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Ms. Lamoyne, would you leave us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which expands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votchay.
Mrs. Acevedo.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Dr. Kraft.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Mrs. Lamoyne.
Here.
Mr. England.
Mrs. Dysar.
Here.
Dr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mrs. Nikosia.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Before we go into the, um, our agenda items, on behalf of the whole board, I'd like, we'd like to say happy birthday to Mr. Shawn Warner. Happy birthday, Shawn.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Not till Thursday, but I'll take it. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thursday.
We'll have a special meeting just for that.
There you go. Okay, it's also my daughter's birthday tonight, Katie. So, happy birthday, dar. But anyway, okay, next item on the agenda, and many more, Mr. Warner.
Thank you very much.
Many, many more.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, next item, what are community concerns? No one, okay. All right, next item is a motion to incorporate the report of the July 2016 General Committee Meeting into the minutes of the July 2016 regular monthly meeting minutes. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion, Mr. Long, seconded by Mr. Warner.
Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the minutes of the regular monthly meeting of May 24, 2016, as published on July 22, 2016. There's a motion by Dr. Kraft, seconded by Ms. Nikosia. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the new strategic plan action committee, 2016 through 2021. There was a recommendation by the committee, motion by Dr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. England. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Warner?
I just, um, I read in the minutes, and I wanted to thank Mr. England for bringing up my suggestion about maybe looking into the possibility of having a, another after-school care in the middle of lower part of Parrish. I just wanted to thank Mr. England for bringing that up for me.
You're welcome.
All right. Thanks.
On that same note, are we, Ms. Votchay, are we going to do the survey of parents in the beginning of the year?
Well, we'll be doing it over the course of the year, as we will redistrict and open up the new elementary the following year. We'll look to see if the need is there and do it, incorporate it into one of the school sites more in the middle of Parrish.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Mr. England?
Yeah, we're going to evaluate how much the cost is going to be outside.
Right.
A breakdown. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, there's a motion on the floor, and there's a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion passes 11-0.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the new strategic plan, no, I'm sorry, revision to policy IHC, policy for selecting honor graduates, and there was no recommendation by the committee. Ms. Votchay?
Okay, before we bring up, um, our high school administrators, Mr. Warner, Ms. Munt, and Ms. Watson, I think who is going to do the bulk of the presentation, when we looked at this at the committee meeting, the purpose of looking at the, um, actual policy was to just clean up the language, because three years ago in January of 2013, the board unanimously passed this policy as it sits, and it referenced the incoming freshmen of 2013-14 where these changes were to take place. And that class are now seniors. So, we were just bringing this policy to you to eliminate the old language, so there's really no change to this policy other than the elimination of the language. The, um, the criteria for honor graduates, beginning with the incoming class of 2013-14, we did that, as I said, three years ago. All of the kids in that class are aware of this. They, it's been in the handbook. They know this over the past three years in the classes under them. Um, I do know that when we looked at the policy, there was some question about some of the criteria that you wanted further discussion on and information, which we have supplied to you in a handout, and along with that, Dr. Lewis requested that we talk a little bit too about what we do in, to prepare students for the ACT. So, I think if we would ask our high school people to come up and make this presentation, we've got the statistics on the numbers of people, or the numbers of students, and then the, some information that they have prepared on what they are doing in preparation for the ACT with all of the students.
Yes.
And Ms. Watson?
Okay, so if you look at the handout, at the bottom of that handout, there, um, there's information about statistics on our past honor graduates. So, the concern was, how many students are we excluding by putting in this, um, criteria of 20 or above for the ACT? So, if you look at that chart, our students who earned that 3.3 GPA, who are honor graduates, over the course of the last four years, about 25% of our students were honor, or graduating with honors. And of those students, the majority of the students do earn the 20 on the ACT. There are some students who earned a 19. The bulk of the students who don't earn the 20 do earn the 19, and then a few earn an 18, and really every year only one has earned a 17 on the ACT. So, you've seen that our percent of students graduating with honors is continuing to increase, and we just want to make sure that for our students, that when you graduate with honors, that it's truly an honor, it, you know, honors a small portion of our class who have truly dedicated their time to academics and has, have met that GPA. When we changed this in 2013, it also came at the same time that the state moved towards enforcing all students to take the ACT. So, every student in Louisiana will take the ACT the junior year, and not only that, but it's also nailed 25% of high schools' school performance scores. So, our school letter grade is based on, you know, how these students perform in the ACT. At that same time, colleges were increasing their enrollment, I'm sorry, their admissions criteria. So, now it was, you know, way more important for students to be able to get that 18 in English, the 19 in math, and that 20 composite than it ever was before. So, we just want to make sure that when students are graduating with that, you know, honor cord, that they're able to get into that four-year university, that it truly represents an honor that they've earned. So, um, so that's kind of where that came from. And we just want to give y'all an idea of what are we doing at Sherman High to prepare students to get the 20. If we're going to mandate that they need the 20, we want to make sure that we're doing what we need to do on our end to make sure that they're prepared. So, the way that I presented the information is what were we doing before all of this came about? So, we were doing two main things. We offered an ACT prep course for any student, mostly juniors and seniors, but any student could enroll in that elective course. It served about 90 students per year. We also, um, put in timed, the idea with the ACT is that many students do well in their math courses, their English courses, their science courses, they just can't get through that timed portion of the ACT. So, we started creating lesson starters where every math class, upper-level math class and science class, they would walk in, they would have a timed lesson starter, the teachers would go over those answers, go over the content that the students needed to be successful, and then every week they were quizzed, a timed quiz, to prepare for that ACT. In addition, they also had a full-length practice test in their English courses, their math courses, and their science courses. So, we had that built in. With this new ACT requirement, we realized that junior year was just too late. If students were going to have to take the test in March, then we had to expose them to the test before that. Our students who receive free or reduced lunch do get to take it for free two times, but it only starts their junior year. So, two times total, but starting their junior year. So, if a student wanted to pay for it, the test now went up to $48.50, $42.50. So, we know that students are not taking these tests freshman and sophomore year, because they know they're not going to get the scores that they need, so why pay that money? So, one of the big initiatives that we, um, put into the school was having a school-wide mock ACT test day. So, every student, ninth through 12th, would spend that day in a classroom, taking a full-length test, because it's all about the stamina. Can you start that English test and make it, you know, to the science test? And it really exposed them to the types of questions that they would see on the ACT test. So, maybe they had never seen the geometry questions or the Algebra II questions in ninth grade when they're taking that mock test, but the idea is that when they go into that geometry class, they'll recognize some of that same content and realize, oh, wait, I saw that question on the ACT last year. I need to make sure that I really do pay attention in class. So, I think that has definitely helped the last three years that we put that in. In fact, we just got statistics today that our ACT average went from a 19.2 last year to a 19.6. You know, it may not sound like a lot, but any, you know, um, you know, decimal of a growth is huge when you're talking about a norm reference test. So, we're really proud of, you know, that success. In addition to that, the last two years, our instructional coaches have developed lessons for every teacher. So, regardless if you teach PE, or you teach art, or any other elective, you receive a packet each week from our instructional coaches to do in your classroom with your students every week. So, every student gets multiple ACT prep, not just in their English, math, and science courses. So, that's been huge. We also have encouraged curriculum writers. We have curriculum writers at each of the subject areas, and we've encouraged them to infuse more multiple-choice type questions, more aligned to ACT-type questions in the, you know, unit assessments for each of our courses. And then last year, we decided, you know what? With the push of ACT, parents are constantly calling, what else can I do for my child? They're not enrolling their students in $800 courses, like, uh, students have private schools go to. They're not buying, you know, $30 books at Barnes &amp; Noble's. So, with the push from the parents, we had a Saturday ACT, uh, test prep session that was attended by mostly seniors, and it was a two-hour session. They went to four different classes and really got some, what are last-minute strategies that you can use to build up your score, because the next Saturday was the ACT. So, we've, you know, put in a lot of things into our program, into our curriculum. Next year, we're really excited to have a new program. We want to change the culture at Sherman High. We want to make sure that every student realizes that academics is the reason why they're there. It's great, you know, we have sports, we have lots of fun things to offer the kids, but we don't want them to, you know, forget about academics. So, we do have a program. We're going to build into our course, actually our school day, and on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, every single student in the building will go to a 30-minute ACT prep session. So, the first week of the month may be a math session, next week, science, next week, English, then reading. So, they receive at least minimum one hour of ACT instruction, in addition to continuing the things that we're doing in our English, math, science, and elective classes. So, we're really excited about that. We think that's, you know, one more step to show the students how important the ACT really is. Um, and I know we focus a lot, and it sounds like we're focusing on one particular test, but it tests grammar, it tests math skills, it tests reading comprehension skills, and every student, no matter what they want to do after high school, will benefit from those skills. So, we're not just teaching to a test, but we're really giving students skills that they can use in college after high school, but as well as their career. So, we're excited about the new things that are coming along. Do y'all have any questions about anything that's on there, or anything that we're doing? Anyone?
Yeah.
Dr. Kraft?
Yeah, uh, the test awareness, that's the important thing with ACT. We'll never know what the test items are and how it's stated, but if they, if they learn the overall, uh, scheme of things, they, they can, uh, read, read the questions and know instructions sometimes, how to follow those and get that done. That's, that's extremely important on any standardized test. And, uh, ACT, uh, 20, 20 is a good starting point, I think. Last, uh, last spring, we recognized those students that scored 30 or above, and we had a goodly amount. So, what, what we want to do is keep moving onward and upward and challenge the students, and I think test awareness and how to not get all bent out of shape in taking the test. And, uh, and that's extremely important. Do they take these tests on computer, or are they still using the paper?
It's still paper and pencil as of now.
Okay. Yes, and, uh, and they had to mark in a little circle, or a little square the answer. Uh, a lot of times, the times that students spend, they meticulously circle there, and they just take, uh, but the best thing, you turn that pencil lid sideways, and you take a swipe at it, and you don't waste time circling and filling that, uh, little, little spot in. So, uh, I appreciate this information. This gives us a good overview of, uh, of what's going on, and, and the trend is upward. 35% there, uh, the graduates with honors and, uh, with that 147, that's, that's a goodly, goodly amount. Of course, hopefully this next year, show that upward, upward movement, movement there. And I think encouragement for the students in saying that this is extremely important, because this the way with schools, you get a comparison, not only within the high schools of the state, but also nationwide. It's a, it's a very good test, ACT, and we appreciate what Sherman High is going. Go Allos.
Ms. Watson, the, the two pages behind that first handout, can you briefly go over that as to what that?
Yes, that was the next thing I wanted to talk about. Um, so, the materials that we're using for this ACT program are absolutely phenomenal. So, we could not have this program unless the supports were built in for our faculty as well as our students. So, the way the textbook works out, each student's going to have an entrance ticket the way the workbook is. Entrance ticket, the teachers have flip charts that they're going to use for the lessons, give the students content, and the students have exit tickets. In addition to that, every student will take, just like we've done, a mock ACT test, but will be using Mastery Prep, the company. So, what you have in your handout, um, is just a snapshot of one of the reports, or two of the reports that we're going to get back, that we feel is missing from what we're already doing with the mock ACT test. So, we're able to say, okay, um, the majority of our students, on average, earned a 18.6 for the ACT, but we really couldn't nail down specific standards. Where are our students lacking in the math, in the English? It's okay to say they need a few more points, but how can we get them there? So, the paper in your, um, your handout is just a snapshot of what that report's going to look like. So, we're going to use that to guide our lessons and make sure we're really focusing on the standards that the students are lacking. So, the first page is math, and so that gives you not just the six areas of the math test, but specifically how are the students doing in quadratic equations, linear equations, specifically. On the back of that paper is a sample handout of what the students are going to receive after they take that test. So, the students will receive their scores on each of the four components, their overall score, but then they will also see how they did on each standard, and it also gives them the top area for improvement. So, if students do want to go off on their own and buy a book, you know, really focus on an area, it gives them that area of weakness where they, if they improve that, then they can go up a few more points. So, we feel that that's kind of been the piece that's been missing from all of this, and we're hoping that it's, um, you know, going to create the change that we hope to
Any, any other questions, Ms. Lamoyne?
This, thank you for your presentation, number one. Number two, this report looks like a great tool to help, you know, teachers and the administrators to see, you know, what are some trends school-wide, what areas to target. Who will be able to access the reports? In other words, will a parent be able to get a copy of this report after a child takes the test to see?
So, we'll send the report home with the students, and then it will be, we'll have it electronically.
I agree.
So, one page per student, so if they lose it, you know, of course, they're teenagers. If a parent wants it, we'll have it to reissue them.
Sure.
So, as administrators, we'll have it. And then the great thing is the stu, the teachers who are having those students in their ACT prep classes will get a report of just their 75 students and how they did, and then at the end of the year, they'll be able to see growth. So, that's going to be an important, um, thing for the teachers teaching the class. They know these students sitting in front of me, where's their weakness? So, when they get to that lesson, they know they really, um, you know, have to get the students engaged and focused on the lesson.
Right, and they can target that specific area of math.
Absolutely.
The other question that I had was on the, um, previous page, in the section about how we're getting the message out, about the importance. I see the first one, the PBIS initiated 20 and up campaign.
20 and up campaign.
Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Sure. So, we wanted to send a message to the students that ACT is important, and that the 20 is really that number to get. It's the TOPS requirements, you have to get a 20 or above on the ACT, and then, of course, that was our kind of standard for all students. So, we had T-shirts made that the teachers wore, so we wore those on the ACT mock day, and then a few, the, um, the actual ACT state mandated day, and a few days throughout the year, just to kind of send the message. The back of it said, "Are you in that number?" So, it just kind of got across, you know, the 20 is that number to get. We also offered incentive for students, so we had a reward program. Students, um, we wanted to recognize, since our school performance score does recognize students getting that 18 or above, we had a particular award, uh, reward for 18 to 20, 20 to 23, 23 to 27. Um, in fact, if you scored over 30, you had a dinner, well, a lunch with your principal. So, we took them out to Par Three Restaurant, and, um, you know, it was about eight of those students, and so, um, and we had signs all over the building, reminding students of the importance, but also reminding them of the rewards. So, it was kind of an initiative through our PBIS group to, um, just get the word out about ACT, just kind of start the culture change.
Sure. Great. Thank you so much.
Okay, I had a question. What's, what is, what number do, does the state require in order to get the additional points for this?
Initial points are, yeah, it's 18.
18?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
In accountability.
In accountability, right.
For college entrance.
For college entrance.
But for the school to get the maximum amount of points, right?
So, it's a, um, a scale.
The minimum.
So, to get any points, you have to be 18. Anything less than an 18, we get zero points. And then 100 points for an 18, and 2.8 points for any point above that.
How many points?
So, 2.8. So, it increases, so we get 150.4 points if you get a 36 on the ACT.
Okay.
Which we, we don't have any yet, but if we would, we would get, you know, the full 150. So, um, now, when they're applying for colleges to get into your LSU, you know, most of your four-year universities, you need that 20 on the ACT. So, we just want to send the message to the students, scholarship dollars, it's more than that minimum requirement. You need that 20 for scholarship purposes, the 24, which was why that was, um, our next reward, um, because we just wanted the kids to constantly push themselves, because we know that the higher the ACT score, the more affordable college will be for them.
Right. Okay, and then I had a question also on, um, the, the new program, which sounds great, the 30-minute preparation every, um, two days a week?
Yes.
So, what, what, um, is that going to take place, in place of? Like, is that going to be during what class period?
It'll be its own class period.
I'm sorry?
Its own class period, so, um, just two days.
So, the entire school?
We will be on a modified schedule. Every student in the building will go from first period to this ACT prep class, and then after they leave that class, they'll go to second period. So, we've just kind of taken, um, a few minutes off of each class, two days a week, to have that ACT prep program, um, in place. And so, it's, the way we've addressed it to the teachers last year when we introduced it, and the way we're going to address it to the students, is that's a sacred time. We, we're not, you know, calling kids down to the office during that time, we're not, you know, issuing suspensions or detentions or anything. That is just a sacred ACT prep time for students to understand, you know, this is how, how important we feel it is. So, it's 30 minutes twice a week. And one of the reasons why we came up with this program, we went to Plackaman's Parish, who's having tremendous success in raising their ACT scores each year, um, and this is one of the things that they're doing. Now, they're doing it five days a week. We're starting off small, you know, working out the kinks, and then we're hoping to get there. But that's one thing that many high schools across the state of Louisiana are going towards, having just that sacred test prep, um, time, so that every student, you know, when you leave it up to the teacher to decide how they're going to put it into their content, it looks a little different in every classroom, but when you have a systematic approach, then every student's getting the same instruction, no matter whether they're in, you know, ninth grade or 10th grade, no matter if they have, you know, teacher A or teacher B, they're getting the exact same instruction. So, that's kind of, um, our goal for that.
That is an excellent idea. That's awesome, that ninth through 12th graders will, will be, um, will have the ACT, uh, preparation twice a week. That's, that's a wonderful thing. So, whoever came up with that idea, and Plackaman's did a great job, and whoever instituted it here, I'm sure it's the administration and, and our administration who really pushed for that. It's going to be very beneficial to our students. Um, now, do we know how many, um, parishes require a certain ACT score to be an honor graduate in the state?
Um, I mean, the ones that are around this area, most of them have just the GPA component. However, their GPA component looks a little different. A lot of schools in St. Tammany Parish honor just their top 5%, top 15%, well, top 5%, 10%, and 15%. Other districts are moving to 3.5 or better. Other schools are just the top 10 of the whole school. Those are the only ones that are recognized at graduation. So, it looks a little different, but for the most part, their GPA requirement is a little bit higher, but they don't have, you know, the, the 20 or higher on the ACT as their component.
And Ms. Votchay, what, when did we raise the, um, I know it used to be 3.2. When did we raise it from 3.2 to 3.3? Was it that same year? The changes are going into effect this year. Okay. With this year's senior class. This year's senior class. So, it was 3.2 this past year, okay. I couldn't remember the, the year that that, that, that was increased. Well, Ms. Watson, I just want to say thank you for your presentation. You did a great job. I appreciate, um, we appreciate all the information and statistics, and, um, Sherman High School's doing an excellent job, and their staff, and I know that the, um, students are their number-one priority, um, and we appreciate all of the, you know, we started years ago just with the ACT prep. Uh, you know, it's wonderful to see the increased preparation classes and, and focus on the ACT, particularly because of the, the colleges, you know?
Right.
The big colleges, increasing their standards and increasing their, uh, and, uh, entrance numbers for the ACT. So, thank you so much for all that y'all do, day in and day out with our students. Y'all do an excellent job. And all the extras, taking them out when they do well, and, you know, all the great incentives. So, thank you very much. Mr. Warner?
Do we need a motion to revise the policy? I'll make that motion if we need to.
Okay. To revise it as?
To revise the policy.
As presented. All right.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Warner, and a second by Ms. Acevedo. Well, before we discuss the, the item, um, does anyone else have any questions of Ms. Watson, or of Mr. Warner and Ms. Munt, who are here?
You did an excellent job.
Yeah, you did an excellent job.
I've got a comment.
Dr. Kraft?
Yeah, we-
Yeah, we appreciate Chalmette High, everything that you're doing for the students because it is a student-centered, uh, school. And we, we thank all of you, Mr. Warner, Ms. Munt, Ms. Watson. Thank you for bringing this information to us. We feel a little more informed about what's, what's going on. And, and we look forward to this administrative policy over how you treat the students, how you prep them for the ACT. And it's making a difference. Thank, thank you very much. Great presentation.
Ms. Watson, I have one more question. So, in 2016, there were 13 students that didn't make, who had a grade point average of 3.2, but that did not make over 20? So, they, they were not able to wear the honor cord?
So, since it goes into effect this coming year, they were still able to. But had it been this year? So, the statistics were on of those honor graduates, 3.3 or better, what did their ACT score look like? And so, right, they were honor graduates. But had it been this school year, they would not have been?
You mean this coming year?
Right. Yes, ma'am.
After we pass this policy?
Yes.
Okay.
No. Policy's already in effect. You would have to change it.
Okay. So, wait, I thought it was 13 students that didn't make the 20?
Right. In other words, the policy that you adopted in 2013 said that in this coming school year, this would go into effect.
It was the beginning freshman.
Right. It was the incoming freshman at that time. So, that this particular class has known this since they were freshmen.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Um, does anyone else have any questions of Ms. Watson? Before we have discussion?
One quick question. Ms. Votch, refresh my memory. Three years ago, when we, when we passed this, was it, uh, the requirement of the 20 on the ACT, was that because of the, uh, the TOPPS program? Or was that, was that part of the reason, you think?
Everything was coming together at that time. TOPPS had, had been in effect. However, the entrance requirements at the universities were changing. So, before that, you could get into LSU or UNO or ULL with a lower ACT score. Now, what's happening at the Flagstaff University at LSU, they're looking at 25 as a composite score, unless you have other, you meet other requirements. At ULL, UNO, and Louisiana Tech, I think, which are the next tier, they was a 23. It's a regional colleges, it's a 20. So, the 20 became very important, not only for TOPPS, but also for admittance into the four-year universities. So, the emphasis on the ACT is heightened. They've, you know, the, a lot of times, they begin to look at it, and I don't want to say look at it as a business, but you know, when you go through law school and then, you got to pass the bar. You could have 4.0, you don't pass the bar, you don't become an attorney. You know, you want to be a CPA in the accounting profession. You want to be a CPA, you could still have a 4.0 in accounting when you graduate from the university, but you still have to pass the CPA exam. And what's happening statewide with kids and their parents? The greater emphasis on the ACT, and this has been a movement that's been going on for quite a number of years, where that score becomes so important, not only to that child, but to his parents, from a financial standpoint, for scholarship opportunities and college admittance, that we have that responsibility to make sure that the kids are performing best. So, maybe 20 years ago, you had a real top achiever who might not have made a, maybe the required score. But the emphasis now and the progression over this period of time has, that emphasis has been much, much, much greater. Kids are more aware of it. And the, the average score, you know, our average score, of course, as in most schools, used to be higher because not everyone took the ACT. You know, a lot of times, kids who were going to, maybe go to a community college or a tech program, took something else. Or our special needs children didn't take the ACT. So, only those students who were going to go to a four-year college where it was required would take it. Well, now, across the state of Louisiana, every junior takes it, regardless of their, um, what they think their future plans may be. So, that's why you saw sometimes a dip in ACT, average ACT scores because you would have more kids taking it than may not, who did not in the past. But we've seen now a steady movement upward, and we're hoping to see even more so. So, if we're saying, you know, every school and school system have different requirements. The emphasis on the GPA, if all you're going to do 3.3 is, is not a real high GPA to graduate from anywhere with honors, to be perfectly honest. You know, like Ms. Watson was saying, most schools, you're looking at at least 35s or you're looking at cutting off a certain percentage of kids or even a certain numerical number. We still feel we need to have a standard that is and should be attainable for any child that we would consider to receive honors distinction in the academic curriculum. It's really hard to look at a, uh, look at a student or parents and say, gee, your child graduated with honors, but is it really eligible to get into the, um, four-year universities? So, there's got to be that combination there. And if we feel that even if they have, they struggle a little bit with test-taking, the preparation that we're having is going to help students to keep attaining a little bit higher and a little bit higher and a little bit higher. So, that 20 on the ACT, you know, is something that they really all need to shoot for. And that emphasis, we feel, needs to be there.
And I, I tend to agree with the administration that we should, um, we should go ahead and, and keep the policy, well, make the 20 as part of our policy.
Right. We're just proposing some language cleanup. If y'all wanted to change in some way that ACT requirement, then you'd have to introduce language to actually change the policy.
Oh, okay. So, I, I just, I'd be in favor of just leaving it as is. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a question.
Well, okay.
Um, for the class of 2017, the juniors, and Ms. Votch, you just mentioned, you know, across, across the state, all our juniors take the ACT. So, of the juniors with a, who ended last school year, who are now the upcoming seniors, who had 3.3, how many of them fell below the 20? Do y'all have that information?
We do. It's about 15 of our juniors. I mean, juniors going to be seniors. However, most of our seniors do take it again in September and again in October, and most of them take it again in December. So, we do expect that number to decrease dramatically. And of those, the majority of them have a 19 already. So, we don't feel like that's going to be a huge, you know, jump for them to have to make to get that 20 on the ACT. We also, since it's the first year that we are having this new rule in place, we've been telling these students since they were freshmen, but of course, they start to listen to it when it becomes, you know, in their face. So, we do plan to have those meetings with the seniors, you know, reiterate to them that you're not just looking at that 3.3 GPA, but you really need to focus and do what you have to do to get that 20 on the ACT. So, we will have these test prep sessions in place for them. But also, we just want to get the point across. We don't want them to be surprised in May when they don't, you know, become an honor graduate because of the ACT. But for the most part, during scheduling process last year, I was one of the, you know, the administrators that helped with scheduling. And we reiterated that to the, you know, students when we sat down with, you know, all their test scores and their, you know, transcript. So, we think the, the students are very well aware of it, and they are making the plans. More, four, five years ago, when I worked with seniors for scholarships and I would run that data, the beginning of September, to have those meetings, the majority of the students hadn't taken the ACT yet. So, really, I mean, it's been a great thing that all of our juniors have to take it because now, they know where they are. And they know how many more times they have to take it. So, they're not surprised in October when it's almost too late and they're applying for college. So, I feel like, you know, the majority of the kids do have the 20 that they need. And then, most are on track to getting that 20.
Okay. And, uh, thank you for that with the, uh, the students and the 15. Also, I hear a lot about the students, I guess they're well aware. But also, this is the first year that it's being implemented with a graduating class. So, I would really ask that also, the parents are well informed because we know what happens when it's graduation time and, you know, they have the GPA, but that, uh, maybe someone of this 15 would not get the 20 on the ACT. And then, um, sometimes people pretend that they didn't know about it and things like that. So, I, I heard a lot about the students are well informed, but if we can make sure that the parents are well informed as well, especially towards the end.
Well, if the policy remains the same, then what we'll do is, for those students on track, then we'll make sure that we send something, a notification home to the parent as well.
Well, with all due respect, I know we make policies. And then, you know, sometimes you make policies and you see how they affect students individually. I'm not saying that we need to lower standards by any means. I'm, I'm all about, you know, wanting to keep high standards. And I realize the state is, you know, increasing and, you know, the colleges are increasing. But I would propose that we take, take that part, the 20 out of the policy. If it would have affected this year's seniors, 13 students who worked very, very hard and got the grade point average with our curriculum. It's our coursework, our curriculum. And they were able to reach the, the 3.2 average. If this politi, policy was in effect this year, 13 of those students would not have been able to graduate with honors. And that's a big thing. And I, I realize, you know, we want to keep the standards high. But that's 13 students that probably were very high achievers. I know a lot of students, you know, personally, who get very nervous on tests. And, you know, you know, yes, we start testing early. And I mean, even little ones, it's like, they're nervous wreck about testing. To place one day's test, and I know they take it, they could take it several times. But sometimes, students just get themselves psyched up, or psyched out, I should say, you know, not doing well on a test, knowing what big emphasis it has on, on, you know, whether they're going to be an honor graduate from our high school or not. And, um, you know, I don't know if, if anyone else knows this, but, you know, Albert Einstein, he failed a test to get into college. So, that goes to show you that, you know, I mean, we talk about Einstein here. And if 13 students work so hard for four, four years and don't get to be an honor graduate, I think, you know, it's a double whammy for them. You know, they may not get into LSU unfortunately. But still, Chalmette High School, they, they worked hard and they achieved the, the 3.2 or 3.3, you know, average. Um, you know, 3.3, that's going to be increased the next year. That's, you know, you know, I think that's great. But, you know, to, to, to base so much emphasis on that one test, and I know, you know, it, it's an important test. But it's just, I think we're, we're, or punishing students who do not test well. And I know we need to maintain the significance of the ACT and taking the test and doing as, 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 as best as they can. You know, so not only can they get into the, the big colleges, but they receive additional monies in top, et cetera. And it, and it's all great. But for one of our students who get that grade point average but don't get to graduate with honors, I just think it's an injustice to the student. And I think that, um, we need to change that. And I would like to place that in the form of a substitute motion, if anyone would second it. Okay. So, much for that plea. It dies for a lack of second, of a second. And without due respect, it is, you know, my feelings, you know, what my statements were no reflection upon the administration's opinion and administration's, all the hard work that they've been doing. You know, I just, you know, I just hate to see us, again, punish a student who has worked so hard for four years. And for that student not to be able to walk across the stage with that honor cord, even though they got the, the grade point average to do so. Okay. Anyone else? All right. Well, let's take a vote. There's a motion on the floor and a second. Please catch to votes.
Uh, motion passes 10 to 1.
Thank you, Ms. Votch. Thank you, Ms. Votch. Thank you, Ms. Watson, Mr. Warner, Ms. Munt. We appreciate all you do and thank you for being here tonight.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Granberry?
Good evening. Good evening. Here's our update as of right now. Seems to change by the hour sometimes, but, uh, by the hour.
Okay. Does anyone have any, any questions from Mr. Granberry? Mr. Granberry, you have many spots left open, unfilled?
Right now, four. But we're working on them. Of course, if you notice, we've hired seven teachers since last time and lost five, so.
Goodness.
Wouldn't you, like I said?
The moving target, huh? Mr. England?
Oh, is this mostly math teachers or English teachers?
Math teachers.
Math teachers.
Any certified math teachers out there? We would like you to come in for an interview.
As a matter of fact, of the four positions, it's math, 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 and math. So, like Ms. Votch said, if we have any math teachers out there that are looking, give me a call.
Are there any other questions? Oh, okay. Not a question, but under retirees, we have Dennis Juno. Just, that's new from last meeting, too.
Big loss. Big, big loss.
Uh, Mr. Juno does a tremendous job. He's our HVAC maintenance person. And he operates the computer. He does the troubleshooting in all of the schools, makes sure the chiller's up and running the way they need to be, temperatures set well. I, he is a major, major loss to the school system. But, um, you know, they had relocated to Mississippi. He's been taking a long drive every day getting here. And at this ti, time of his life, he felt the need that to retire. And he sorely will be missed, not only for his job performance, but he's a very, he's a wonderful man. but he's a very, he's a wonderful man. And is, um, does a tremendous job at each and every one of our schools.
How many years did he have, Mr. Granberry?
Uh, it was over 20, but he's, uh, reached a certain age that, uh, I might not going to mention, but he said that was the time, you know?
Okay. Well, thanks, Mr. Juno.
And plus, like Ms. Ote said, he comes in from Poplarville, Mississippi, you know?
They relocated after the storm.
Right.
Well, happy retirement and thank you, Dennis Juno, for all your years of service. We appreciate your being with us. Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Granberry. Next item is a motion to approve administration's recommendation for student athletic insurance for 2016, 2017. There was a rec- recommendation by the committee. Motion by Mr. Lewis, Dr. Lewis, I'm sorry, seconded by Mr. Long. Any discussion? There being none, please catch to votes.
Motion passes 11 to 0.
Okay. Next item, are items to be placed on the agenda of the next committee meeting? Anyone? Okay. Next item, superintendent's recommendations.
Um, just reminders to, um, everyone, we are visibly preparing for the opening of the new school year. Um, our new teachers, uh, well, actually, we had the administrator's workshop last week. Our teachers new to our school system arrived this morning. So, they'll be going through a week of intensive pre-in-service. And then, all of our teachers will come back August 3rd and the students on August 9th. We'll have our opening of school event, um, on Friday, August 5th, just to remind everyone, you know, at the Civic Center, our program will begin at 8:30, but, um, need to get there a little bit earlier. Make sure you get a good place to park. So, that'll be Friday, August 5th, the morning of.
Time be thirty.
So, we're eager, yeah, we're eagerly, eagerly anticipating, um, the start of our new year.
What time does the program start?
8:30 is when the program starts.
Anyone else? Eight. Thank you, Ms. Ote. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Dr. Brown. All in favor of the motion, say a aye or a nay?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.